This is another special meeting going over the budget tonight. And this is the 28th of January, 3:30. Steve, are you?
Oh, Eric, he can do the first short, the best.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna go over the community development and parks and recreation budgets. If you have any questions throughout, just stop me here. Just to start off, kind of our goals through the community development and parks and recreation, to improve the safety and appeal of our community through high-quality customer service and consistent code enforcement, and to enhance the lives of residents and visitors to Burlington by providing high-quality park and recreation facilities, fun and safe recreation programs, and environmentally sound services. Just a recap of our organizational chart. A few years ago, when the two departments were combined, have a development and parks director and administrative assistant that oversee both sides of the department. Code inspections, we have four full-time staff, including building code and rental nuisance, planning and zoning, one full-time staff. On the park side, including forestry, we have four full-time staff and one part-time. On the recreation side, which includes the golf course and the pool, there's two full-time, and on the recplex side, there's two full-time. As you see, our seasonal employee employment, 18.65 full-time equivalent. Essentially, we have more full-time equivalent in seasonal employees than we do permanent full-time employees. So, in the summer, we spike quite a bit with a number of seasonal employees. On the community development side, we have two budget codes, 1301 Building Code Administration and 1401 Planning and Zoning. Under Building Code Administration is Rental Nuisance and Building Code. The primary services that we provide, building permits and inspections, including construction, electrical plumbing, mechanical sewer demolition, rental inspections and enforcement, Chapter 161 of our code, the housing code, nuisance inspections and compliance, planning and zoning, which serves a variety of functions, including site plan review and coordination for any new development in the community, serve on Planning Commission, zoning board, historic preservation, as well as administering projects and grants through the city. Some of the issues through the departments, the number of abandoned and deteriorating properties, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. We've been very successful with the abandoned building program, the 657A, that we've sold quite a few properties on, and I'm gonna highlight some of the statistics on that that we haven't kind of brought forward yet. But outside of the ones that we do bring forward, we still have a number of other abandoned and deteriorating properties that are occupied, whether they be owner-occupied, some rentals. It's just the age of the housing stock of the community, the income of some in our community, the ability to maintain a property, it can be very difficult, especially with a lot of the larger older homes, so that's an issue we continue to face. Through our code inspection, code compliance, rental nuisance, building code, so that's a large factor. And then code compliance, again, we're working with a lot of people that either culturally they don't know how to maintain their property, or don't have that record of maintaining their property, some just don't want to do it, some don't have the means to do it, whether age or physical or income, but it is something that we work hard at, is working with individuals and trying to get compliance on a rental and nuisance standpoint, zoning standpoint, and building code standpoint. But there are issues that we face just dealing with people, that we are dealing with people on these, and we try and be compassionate, but also have the understanding that there are things that have to be done and codes that have to be followed, and so there's that line of working with them, but also making sure we get compliance. One of the hard part of the code compliance that we see is, especially on the nuisance, working with someone for a month or two to clean up a property, has a bunch of trash or debris on the property, it gets cleaned up either through the owner or through a nuisance abatement, and two weeks later, after we've abated it, it looks the same, and a neighbor drives by and says, "Why didn't you guys do anything? I've been complaining about this for three months," and they didn't see the maybe one-week timeframe where it was cleaned up. Now it's another issue again, and we don't, after it's cleaned up, we don't go back every single day to that property, but we do have a lot of repeat offenders, and that's an issue of, are we doing anything from the city? And a lot of times it is, yes, it was cleaned up, but maybe there's more we could do, but a lot of times it's just that repeat offense by the property owner or resident there, so...
I do have a question about that, real quick. You said repeat offenders. Is there anything you do where if they are doing it more often? I mean, is there...
We did pass, have a resolution, I apologize, get this pulled back up here. A couple of years ago, in 2014, we changed the fees, and we had a separate fee structure for the first offense. If it's abated by the city, I believe it's $100; for the second offense, it's $200. So there is a monetary penalty if it happens twice in one calendar year. Don't know if that's really had the impact, we hope it would, we still see those repeat offenders, and it's something, we just in our, one of our last meetings, was just talking about, are there other things we can do to address that? Looking at municipal infractions, for instance, we have gone through that with a couple of other properties. There is dealing with one property instance. For instance, it can take two months to address a property going through that. It's not the two-week timeframe maybe for an abatement, but it is something we are looking at, looking what other communities do, and it's just an issue we continue to battle, so...
Thank you.
Hopefully this doesn't cut out too many times here. So, I guess, kind of piggyback on that, the code compliance, especially dealing with nuisance, that's something our entire department, at our staff meetings in the last few months, we've been trying to focus on, not just the two individuals on the nuisance side, but our entire department, are the things we can do better, or work better together, and we're out together. Building inspectors are out quite a bit at different properties, and whether it's taking pictures, putting up a notice, or something, so that's something we're talking about and seeing, what's the most efficient way we can use all of our staff, not just the two dedicated to rental nuisance, so... Last item there, private hazard tree removals. We just are getting into that, related to emerald ashbor and ash trees. We did have some bids, I think there was 12 or 13 of individuals that we had notified, and they hadn't till December 15th to remove their hazard tree and weren't able to, so we did have 12 individuals we had a contract to remove. We have another deadline in March and April, and that this spring, we imagine, as leaves start to show and trees start to show their true condition, that we'll have quite a few more. But something we are dealing with, working parks, forestry, development, all trying to work together on this. But the big impact is in our budget. It's kind of an unknown how many we're gonna have to deal with, but we do have $124,000 budgeted for tree removals on private property in FY '17. Hopefully, we don't have to do that many. We're, I think, fortunate on the initial ones we sent out, there was quite a bit of compliance just on their own, so hopefully that can continue, but we do know there are people that aren't gonna be able to remove their trees, and we've talked about the payment plan, and that's something when we send out our final notice to them, we mention that as well, and, but that is having a big impact on our budget. Under the nuisance miscellaneous technical services, under the building code section, generally that's $30,000, $35,000 budgeted annually for nuisance abatement, and as you see, it's $124,000 this upcoming year to address some of these tree issues. We've had one come in at $50, we had one come in at $7,000, so there is a wide range of what the cost to remove some of these trees are.
How are we doing on the emerald ashbor?
I mean, I'm gonna talk about that from a public side, right-of-way side here in a slide once we get to parks, but the tough part is on the private side, just, we don't have an inventory of, there's X number, we know in the right-of-way, there was 760 ash trees, and there's 96 or whatever in the parks. On the private side, we don't have an inventory of every single ash tree, and so we don't know what the impact's gonna be, and then we don't know what the compliance is, how many people are gonna be able to do it on their own. We're trying to get notices out and give them as much time as possible, and we've tried to just let people know as much as we can. If you think you have an ash tree, or don't know what your tree is, contact, we have a long list of licensed tree professionals, seems to be growing the more we get into ash trees, but contact a couple of those, licensed arborist, see what your tree is, have them evaluate it, so you can start to plan, whether it's six months or a year, whatever that time is to try and save up for it. Even if it's something where you can, it comes in at $1,000, you have $500 saved, maybe you can put that money down and get on a payment plan or something, so we're trying to get that word out as much as we can. Within the nuisance budget, we do reduce that over the next four years, so that will hopefully come back to $35,000 in FY '22. It steps down to 80 in '75 and '65, so this year is the largest amount that we have budgeted, but until we get through it, we just don't know what that cost is gonna be. But we do foresee an end in sight for that. Some of the projects and key items from the development department, one is online inspections. It's something we've been working with county GIS as far as, starting with rentals, doing our inspections on tablets, and they've set up a program for us, we're trying to work through the kinks on that, we're still doing paper copies as well, but we're able to go in with a tablet, and it pulls up, if we click on an issue, and it'll pull up the code section and assign that to it, and so it, a little more efficient from a reporting standpoint of, okay, this electrical issue in this bedroom, it'll pull up the code section when we cite that, and that'll be listed right there for it, and at the end, it'll create a PDF, and we can email that to the property owner right there, when we come back to the office or mail it to them. So that's something we're working on right now on the rental side, and hopefully, over the next few months, we can get a little better at that, and it'll help us with tracking what the issues are, and going back and looking at properties five years from now, knowing what the issues were at the time.
That's a good one.
We're looking at building code, just their general inspection reports, and then possibly nuisance down the road as well, just to improve the accessibility and the reports on these. Also wanna look at tracking and reporting. There are some limitations as to using GIS as far as maybe comparables, tracking, we had this many issues with electrical, or this many issues with plumbing. We will, for that property, have good detail, but comparing across the board, so it's something we're looking at other programs as well, if that would make sense, to use something maybe similar to what the fire department does with their inspection reports. Abandoned property acquisition, that's something we continue to really focus on, that's across between our nuisance officers, overseeing these properties, noticing where there are nuisances, where they're abandoned, and working with our building inspector, Larry Caston, on getting them in the process, and working with attorney on all the paperwork and everything to go through that. But that's been very successful, and something we're gonna continue on. Don't know what the impact with fertilizer plant, number of houses that maybe have been rentals, and how that transitions, but regardless, it's something we'll continue to work through. Housing rehab programs, Dan Eberhart was here in December, looking to apply for a owner-occupied rehab grant, that's something we continue to look for to improve our existing housing stock. We're a member of the Great River Housing Trust, that they do some down payment assistance and income-qualified work, up to $10,000 for plumbing, electrical, windows siding for residents of the four counties here, so those are good programs. GIS continuing to get more data online, not just from development side, but from the fireside, public works, we continue to work with them on getting as much data out there on the public website as we can, looking at, right now, kind of a setback layer, where you can go and see what your setbacks are, where if your property is conforming or not, if you wanna do an addition, or if something happens to your house, you can know what the end result might be, but...
Eric, come back up, just, can you talk about the cooperative program with the school district that's in the works, where we stand on that?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit when I talk about our abandoned property as well, so...
All right.
Yep. The other item, the brownfields, we applied for a grant for the Dresser Rand site for cleanup. Hopefully, we'll be successful on that, if not, well, it's still a project we're gonna have to move forward with, cleaning up and getting that hopefully back to a marketable use for someone to purchase. We've also done a lot of, a few small projects, we're working directly with the DNR, where they've had 100% reimbursement on Phase 1 studies, asbestos studies, for the Apollo, the Parkview Care Center, the Typewriter Building, that the city qualifies for as a public entity, where we've been able to get some of these reports completed at no cost, it's 100% reimbursement. And then if, whether it's the city or someone else, downtown partners develops the property, then qualify for up to $25,000 of abatement costs to the property as well, so doesn't require that we abate it, but if that money is there available, if the city were to do something, for instance, if we demolished Parkview Care or Apollo, we qualify for that money for abatement cost on it, that private individual would not. And one of the key items, just to note, we were working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, successful in getting the Iowa American Planning Association Conference here in October. That'll be at the Catfish Bend Pizzazz Complex out there in October 2016. Just wanna give an early notice on that, we'd hope some people are able to attend from council, from our boards and commissions, but generally, they have 150 to 200 planners from across the state attend those conferences, and we're happy that it's here in Burlington this October, so...
Sure job.
Yeah, Chelsea had a big part in that as well, and we have a committee that we're still planning on working, working everything out through that. Our redevelopment program, this is kind of a rename of our demo housing fund. In the past couple of years, we've done a little less demo and a little more kind of redevelopment-type projects through that fund. So part of that is looking to kind of move forward with a redevelopment fund, that we can work on some of these houses through, kind of the background on the process, we've been successful in acquiring properties through the 657A state code chapter, if they're abandoned, and we can go to court, and if we can prove that it was abandoned, and the owner doesn't have any intention of redeveloping the property or coming forward, that a judge can award title to the city, and we can move forward with selling it, or developing it, or doing something with it. We have acquired a few lots through the county tax certificate process, that we've been able to get in the hands of neighboring properties that otherwise have just gone up for tax sale, and we've been mowing for a number of years, and so since we were able to actually acquire it, we can get it in the hands of neighboring properties, expand their lot size, and get them to maintain it, instead of us sending a nuisance bill to it every few months or every couple of months. And we have had a couple of properties that the owner is local and just walked away from the property and deeded us the lot or property, and we've been able to sell those as well. We have had a few demolitions, I think just three or four, maybe five in the last year, but we have done a lot more sale of property, whether it be lot or structure, going through the city council on that, and then seeing a lot of private rehabilitation, have had some new construction and lot combination, so... One property here, it's kind of hard to see on the screen a little bit, but 721 Vine, it was a property that was on the border of whether we demo it or try and sell it, and we were able to sell it successfully and sell it, and it just for, I think it was a $500 property, but if you drive by it now, you wouldn't know what it looked like before. It's a very nice property now, all new siding, windows, roof, decks, porches, sidewalks, so that's one that we probably would've demoed in the past years, but since we've been going through this process, it's been successful in rehabbing this, keeping it on the tax rolls, increasing the taxes. I started to look at the data from 2013 to present, but then went back further as well. We've acquired 27 properties since 2013, we have eight pending right now that we're starting to process on notification, setting up hearings on. We've actually acquired 54 properties since 2010, and that does include owner deed and county set tax certificate, and as well as the 657A, which is the majority. And the last, since 2013, we've sold properties for $136,500 and over $275,000 since 2010. The assessed value change since 2013 was $158,400, and that number will update in the next couple of years, a lot of the improvements, it doesn't catch up on the assessment when you look online for a year or so, so we have, I know there's, there could be almost double that, or well over $200,000 that we've increased just in the last couple of years, but it won't show up for a couple of years on the county records, but looking back to 2010, we've increased the value on these properties we've acquired and sold, over $400, or $540,000, so that's pretty significant, just assessed value and taxes that we've maintained or saved or increased through this program. One thing through this, you look at the sale amounts, that's not all just money going back into the program, we do pay our attorney fees out of this program, any title costs we have, any lien search costs we have, all come out of this fund as well. Can average between $1,000, $2,000 to go through the 657A process per property, so there, look at 54 properties, that's $100,000 that we've potentially spent, 50 to 100,000 on going through the process, but the end result has been much greater than that. There have been, looking at nine instances where we were not awarded title through the 657A process, either the owner stepped up and said, "I'm really gonna do something," and the judge doesn't, gives them the time, I know a number of those, we're gonna have to go back on, because they haven't done anything in the last couple of years, so... But there are some times where we do go through that and don't get title awarded. One property, I know we kind of went through the appeals process, Gulf Lane is gonna be coming up for sale on March 7th, and we're gonna be putting some notice out on that, but that's one of the more significant properties that we've acquired, so we'll be seeing some information on that. We have used this program as a grant match for the Great River Housing Trust, for some of the funds are matched to the programs that they apply for larger grants, and bring more money for rehab back into the community, and then the South Hill Owner Occupied Rehab Grant, that essentially comes out of this program as well. And then, I guess, a couple other, because of the money generated through this program, something like Parkview Care Center, we're able to take on some not huge projects, but a little bigger projects that we can acquire, demo, and then sell, for instance, sell lots on this and make most of that money back, and then get hopefully three new homes on that lot that could generate...
You're definitely doing Parkview then?
We've started the process on that, yep.
Good.
But, yeah, there you could see a projection of three, four, $500,000 in new assessed value with three new lots on that property, so... Did you have any other questions on the program or anything, Jim?
You are gonna talk about the BHS today?
Oh, yeah, through this, thanks for reminding me, I had a note here, but some of the properties we've been acquiring, we've talked to the superintendent, we've talked to the South Hill Neighborhood Group and regional planning, what are some options for some of these houses we're acquiring, and one is working with the Construction Trades Program with BHS, we've had some initial discussions on, I don't know where they're at in the process, but initially, they'd talked about having their junior class through this Construction Trades Program do a rehab project, and then their senior class do a new construction project, and maybe working, whether it's one a year, on a home that we acquire, working with them to, as a government agency, we can just transfer the ownership, it doesn't have to go through a sale, of getting them a home that would suit them for rehabbing, getting these individual students in the construction trades. We often see a shortage of that type of trade here in southeast Iowa, getting them interested, getting them in that, where they can rehab a home one year, and then we're acquiring some lots through that county tax certificate process. They could work with the school on acquiring a lot through the city and building a new home on that, their second year, so that's something we've had discussions, I guess, kind of, I'm sure there'll be some discussions with council on that, but it is something as a government agency, we don't have to go through the public bid process, we can transfer property, and I know they've looked at targeting areas and single mothers with kids and different things, so there could be some great benefit to the community to that, so...
I'm a huge fan of that potential program, since I've been on council, and before that in the school district, I thought, there ought to be more cooperation between city and school, I thought, if this is one way we can do it, then we should be doing it.
We had, we were having a conversation, one of our, it's kind of a neighborhood redevelopment committee that Jim and I and Police Chief were on, Shawna Freitag with Young House Family Services had mentioned, they had a construction management program in Fort Madison, and her and Mark Chicken Dance, and I don't remember if his individual has an electrical company, I don't remember if it was Moorefield or someone, all went through that program in the same year, and two of them, one has his own construction company, one has his own electrical company, and Shawna's been very, done very well with Young House, but shows the quality of individuals that can come out of that, and what impact it can have for, I mean, starting their own businesses down the line and getting into the trade, so that was something that would be a good benefit to the community. Kind of our fiscal year development reports for FY '15, just to kind of recap of the amount of permits and inspections that we do through the development department. In FY 2015, we had 126 residential construction permits, this includes rehab, remodel, new constructions, additions, garages, 39 commercial construction, majority of those remodeled, but some new construction, three industrial, 171 electrical permits, 73 plumbing, and 108 mechanical permits. The total fees generated through those was just over $207,000, which was down a little bit over previous years. We have had a lot of discussion on a lot of development, just this current fiscal year and foreseeing in the next fiscal years, we do anticipate that going up, but it does go up and down with the economy, we see that. The valuation, see around $20 million. One note, the industrial construction, you see the value's higher than the commercial, but the permit fees are lower. That was a partial permit for Silgan, just their foundation, which wasn't a fee charge. This coming fiscal year, in FY '16, you'll see a bigger disparity, which, it's been a great project, you'll see a valuation of over $20 million in industrial without a permit fee, but that, that's a great value that we're adding to our community, and shows the amount of construction that's gone on with that project. Rental inspections, we collected just over $79,000 in fees, we inspected 1379 units in FY '15, contained within 663 buildings. Our total number of rental units that we have in Burlington right now, our latest, was 3,964, so we, on average, inspect around a third, based on our three-year timeframe for duplex and single family, or five-year timeframe for duplex, single family, three year for multifamily, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, for a number of inspections. And then we have 1,985 total buildings that are rental properties in Burlington, have seen an increase in the last number of years, see what impact with some of this construction going on with Silgan and the fertilizer plant, what impact that has. Nuisance inspections, we did collect over $39,000 in fees, those are abatement costs and our administrative fees that we collect back through property taxes or payment to the city. So every time we, you see a nuisance abatement going through the council, it's not always just dead money, luckily, we do get some of that back, but not always in a timely manner, not always all of it in that same year, so... We had over 1,200 nuisance complaints received last year, over 1,000 abatements done by property owners after we notified them, gave them a timeframe, and over 449 abated by the city that went through council. You see the number of abated by owner and city is higher than complaints received, sometimes we didn't get a complaint, but we went back and re-inspected, or it might be a careover from last year, or just noticed it when we're out, so it might not have been logged, but there is quite a bit of abatement going on each year. This is the budget, operation budget for building code and planning and zoning, as well as revenues. Typically, the, or oftentimes, the revenue through building permits, housing, and nuisance has been fairly close to the building code costs. You see a spike in the last couple of years, that's last year, we had $80,000, this year $124,000 for nuisance abatements for ash trees, so that's really spiked up the cost on it. On the planning and zoning side, we've had some fluctuation, had a planner Amber leave, and then we were vacant for six months, and then hiring someone back, so there's been some up and down, just based on timing. But personnel costs are the primary costs out of these two budgets, with nuisance being the primary non-personal cost on the building code administration side, and then we do pay for GAS and DPI out of the planning and zoning side, as the non, our major non-personal cost on that side. We do anticipate, we do have a lower number, we're in the nuisance collections for FY '17, we do hope that that will come in higher, just kind of on the timing, how we're gonna work with some of these repayment plans through the ash tree removals, we would anticipate that maybe higher this year, or it could follow up next year, so that is a conservative number hopefully, but we'll see how that comes in. CIP through the development department, one of the annual projects is the redevelopment program, which was, we renamed it this year, it was the demo, housing demo fund, an annual amount, we have... We have twenty thousand annually put in that. This year, it was put in at fourteen thousand, so that six thousand could be used as local match for that South Hill Neighborhood Owner Occupied Rehab Grant. So those two combined would equal twenty thousand. Special projects include flood and protection improvements, the Dresserand Brownfield Cleanup that we applied for the two hundred thousand dollar grant with the local match of the, through the TIF funds, and then the CDB Owner Occupied Grant, which was a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar grant with the six thousand demo or redevelopment fund as the local match. Some possible future projects, always looking for grant opportunities that we can apply for and go through the council on those if they, they feel those are appropriate. We've talked about the sidewalk program in the past, whether, down the road, that could be something that'd be brought back as a targeted program to really identify areas of need and we worked a little bit. Wayfinding signage, I know they're hopefully completing their study here over the spring or summer, whether that's something that could be done or in cooperation with the Convention and Visitors Bureau or other grant opportunities. And then trail improvements, I'll talk a little bit later on in the parks budget where we're at with the Flint River Trail, but getting closer to completion on that. One thing we have talked about in the past was some of the flooding as a bridge over Flint Creek, whether we could use some grant money to replace that so we don't have the cleanup cost when there are floods of the tree debris. So that's the summary on the development side. If you have any questions or towards the end, you can let me know anytime. Parks and Recreation Department, this has six budget codes, including park maintenance, forestry, park swimming pool and recreation, which are general fund, and then Flint Hills Golf Course and Recplex, which are enterprise fund programs. Some of the items and issues we see, key within these areas are the staffing. As noted on the personnel, our organizational chart, we have a large number of seasonal employees. All of them are in the parks system. The retention, we do get quite a few back on an annual basis. We have quite a few great employees that have been working with the city for a number of years at the golf course, Recplex and parks. But losing one or two employees throughout the year when you're, everyone's duties are very defined and losing one or two at any time can have a key impact on whether you're, it's getting extra people to set up a tournament at the Recplex or try and get trees down and through forestry or maintaining our parks and getting those mowed. So, so quality employees, not saying all of them, but just getting some of those that will stay throughout the year, whether it be nine-month or three-month, and not having that turnover is something we look for. Just wages is something as well. You look at McDonald's or Walmart, they're paying more oftentimes than we are for people starting out mowing or similar wages. And so that's something I think we're very conscious of. We can't pay someone twenty dollars to go mow, but we also can't compete with everyone. So we aren't always getting people that wanna come work for us, just from that standpoint as well. Aging facilities and amenities, we do have, especially on the park side, great park facilities, shelters used by a number of residents and community members. Some of them are older and need work. We do have to maintain those, whether it be tuck pointing or brickwork or siding or window replacement. So that's something we're just conscious of. All our facilities aren't brand new, they're things that have to be maintained. Ash trees, mentioned from the nuisance side, but on the forestry side, we have a hundred and twenty thousand scheduled for FY seventeen. On the forestry side, that's for contract work, and I'll talk a little bit more about where we're at from a tree standpoint here shortly. But we do project over the next four years, getting that amount down back to what it was previously at the thirty-five thousand in FY twenty. Hopefully, we can get that down quicker than we project, but we just don't know. Some of the ravines, some of the wooded areas, how that impact's gonna be. And some of the, primarily what's left are the big nasty trees over right of ways that are very difficult and are gonna be more expensive. So until we get through the bidding process, we don't know. And then continue to work on the deficit accounts. One note, in FY fifteen, the revenue covered the operational costs of the golf course and the Recplex. It didn't cover the capital items when those were factored in, but just from an operations standpoint, that was good to see that both of those revenues covered the operations. But again, the capital items are something on an annual basis that we'd like to see those covered as well. Parks and Forestry work very closely together. Forestry is under, under the park supervisor. Combined, they have twelve to seventeen employee, seasonal employees over the course of year, whether that be nine-month from March to October, or three-month college students, June, July, August. They have thirteen park sites, approximately two hundred acres of parks, ground shelters, playgrounds. So very, I think a very neat picture of Dankworth Park showing the ball fields, the swing pool, the tennis courts, the playground, a lot of amenities we have in that park. From a tree standpoint, we have over eleven hundred, or eleven thousand right-of-way trees, twenty-five hundred park trees and an untold number of wooded areas, ravines, Bonn's Hollow area near the sewer, behind Dankworth Park, along the riverfront. So a lot of trees throughout the community.
And we're only retraining, we're replanting trees that can't get diseases, right?
Yep.
Alright.
That's what we're doing.
As of now.
As of right now.
One, one thing on that is, looking at some of these areas in the past, we'll see five or six ash trees on one block and they're all coming down, it's having a huge impact on that block. Our diversity is much, much greater than it was before. That if there is an issue with one tree, it's affecting a very low percentage of our trees. But that's been a conscious effort in all our plantings, is getting a diverse tree species. But unfortunately, I don't think any trees totally immune to disease or something gets brought over from Europe or Asia, and that's, it, it happens. And, but I think we're in a better position now through our planting and removals than we were even five years ago. So... Equipment through the CIP is vital operations and efficiency. There is a line there between maintaining the equipment that we have, extending it out as long as we can, but also not incurring all those maintenance costs or breakdown and lost half-time cost of having something that we're working on more than we're actually using. So that's something we're very conscious of. Parks budget, see some annual changes based on project needs, maintenance of facilities, shelters, playgrounds and sites. And as I mentioned, we do plan to reduce the forestry budget upon completion of the AB and ash tree removals. We are gonna continue to address trees and stumps over the next few years, which we'll talk about here now as well. When we started out, gave an update a few years ago or a couple of years ago, estimated around nine hundred and sixty ash trees total, including six hundred and sixty-eight in the right-of-way, ninety-two in parks, two hundred in other areas, tree lines, ravines and whatnot. To date, we've removed maybe just over this numbers from a couple of weeks ago, five hundred right-of-way ash trees. We have a hundred and sixty-eight ash trees remaining. We did treat two hundred and twenty trees in the summer twenty fourteen, and as you see, the number remaining versus number treated. We have started removing those trees. That was an effort to extend their life, that, not something we intend to do forever. There are a handful that property owners have paid and contracted to have treated themselves. And that would be if, as long as they wanna treat it, then it will stay. But if they don't desire, the city isn't gonna be treating them.
Isn't that something, are they gonna have to do that for the duration of the life of the tree, every year get it treated?
Yep, yep. Well, it's every two to three years they'll have to treat it.
Okay.
So... But we only had, I think, six or eight of those right-of-way trees that property owners wanted to continue. And they're very impactful trees on their property, giving them great shade in the summer and something that they've had probably for twenty, forty years in some instances. So we do project fall or winter of twenty seventeen timeframe for removal of the remaining ash trees. Fortunately, we're continuing to move this closer and closer. I know at one time it was twenty eighteen and then is past the winter of twenty seventeen. Hopefully, it could even be the summer of twenty seventeen, but conservative of the fall of twenty seventeen, that we should have the remaining ash trees in the right-of-way removed, which are a big goal of ours. One of the impacts of having all these trees removed, we have approximately seven hundred stumps currently in our right-of-way. We did remove two hundred and fifty-six in two thousand and fifteen. That was the first time in the last few years that we've made an effort to, from our standpoint, move forward with removing stumps. And that's goal over the next five years, is to remove at least two hundred a year over the next five years. We're doing that through contract, through our forestry and park staffing, sum in combination of those. So I know we get a lot of calls on that and that's something we have now set a plan forward. And as we're kind of winding down on our ash trees, we're able to remove, we're contracting some of the, more of those and hopefully we can start to address and get all the stumps removed over the next five years. Is an outside goal, hopefully sooner than that. But going forward after this, I think, one thing we've talked about is removing a tree completely, not, and our goal is to get the ash trees removed from a safety standpoint, but going forward after that, it's to remove the entire tree, including the stump. So a resident doesn't have to mow around a stump for a couple of years, well, we're getting back to it, so.
Do we still make chips available to people that wanna come?
Yep, we have chips down at Sunnyside Park off of Sunnyside and then down at the Armory on Summer Street, free chips to anyone. And they, it has been out at Manor Site, those are getting, going away because of the sale there. But, but chips and then firewood as well at the Armory site, they do have to sign a waiver for firewood to cut that, but.
So, but ash trees can be used for that? They're not dangerous or?
Yeah, you can't transport it across straight lines. Every county in the state's quarantined, so every county in the state has the same restrictions. But it is something you can use and we have quite a bit that people do use throughout the community. So again, you see the lowering of the contract cost over the next number of years. This will be focused on tree removals this year and then combination of stump grinding and tree removals over the next couple of years. And every year, we evaluate that and hopefully we can lower it each year beyond what we have here. But we wanna be prepared in case some of the costs do come in higher. Some of the park improvement projects that we've completed and ongoing, the archery tower, had some council members at that, has been a great addition to Dankworth Park. Did complete the skate house shelter roof last year. That's something I think over the last five years, we've re-roofed pretty much all of our shelter houses in all of our parks. So that's a great thing to have done, just to maintain the quality and integrity of those shelters. Have done some mosquito park improvements, see the new benches that, going forward, those are the bench types that we're purchasing through donations. We get a lot of memorial bench donations through families and so we're able to purchase those. And those have been a great addition. We, you see a sign there as well, that was just added a couple of weeks ago, donated through Michelle Snicker and a member of her husband. She also had three along the riverfront, which have been great additions to the riverfront as well, talking about ecology and the Mississippi River and bald eagles and...
Yeah, those are good.
So those have been nice additions and something people can donate to the parks as well. And then the Crapo Park Outdoor Classroom, we did just order some of the sign posts for it. We don't have the actual inserts, but that's kind of the final stages of that outdoor classroom that, it's a donation through BNSF and Crapo Park Foundation, kind of interpretive area. You can use it as a classroom and talking to some of the schools about use. But hope to have a ribbon cutting this spring and invite council and BNSF and donors to that. Some ongoing or future projects, we are working on the cannon renovation. We've had some donations on that, sandblasting, repainting the cannons at Crapo, doing some concrete work there. The Campfire Girls Fireplace, just to the south of that, needing some repairs, some tuck pointing, ban shell improvements. We've done some painting and landscaping out front, looking to do some LED lighting and replace some landscaping in back. Has been a great improvement to that. Disc golf course, updates and signage, we're planning on continuing to improve the Crapo Park Arboretum. Tree planting, we did have four hundred and four trees planted in twenty fifteen, much of that through the Lion Energy Grant. We're looking to kind of pare that down years going forward, around two hundred a year. If we're successful with grant, maybe getting larger trees and being a little more specific with where we're planting those. Working on stump removals, amenities through donations, sidewalks, especially ADA, getting ramps where they're needed in some of our park system. And then one thing we've talked about is a, we have Crapo Park Foundation, but looking at a park and rec endowment fund to help fund some improvements throughout on our, all of our parks, not just Crapo. Swimming pool and recreation, fifteen to twenty employees annually at the pool, four to six for summer camp. Pool, very weather dependent and school year dependent. Some of the capital items for the pool, we do have, this spring, the liner project will be going in through Murray and Starker and donations. We had over seventy thousand dollars of that was covered through those donations. But that is, I believe, to be complete by the middle of May of this year. Roof replacement in the fall of twenty sixteen, that, if you've been in the pool during a rainstorm, it's not much different than being outside, or inside the poolhouse, it's not much different than being outside. Something for the long-term integrity of that building needs to be done and something we're looking at. Future upgrades, continue to look for funding, grants, foundations to complete improvements such as diving boards, our guard stands, which are all very in need of replacement, shade structures. As far as programs on the recreation side, the Perkins Park Summer Camp, last year was a very successful year. Had twenty-five to thirty kids day. The fees for the kids at the park cover the cost of the summer camp workers there. Also had events, the City Day in the park, which was very successful. Brad's done some archery with after-school program and some other students looking to do. We have some youth tennis courts at Perkins Park and at the skate park. He's looking at possibilities of doing some youth tennis and maybe a skate competition. So limited staff, Brad's really the only recreation individual we have at the city. He also runs golf course and pool in the summer camp. So we, limited ability to do actual programs, but try and find time to do those as well. And then the big one, the Great River Bridge Race, which this year we're looking at doing a five K, ten K race. It had been a six-mile, two-point-two mile, so some little different changes there, but that's May fourteenth of twenty sixteen. Encourage anyone to come out, whether it's walking it, it's a great chance to...
I was thinking about running the ten K this year.
Yeah.
I'm not going to, but I thought about it though.
Get up, walk up Snake Alley or run up Snake Alley and cross the bridge. It's a very limited opportunity to do that, so we encourage anyone to do that or try and beat Jim Fernando in the race, so.
Good luck on that. Yeah.
Swimming pool did have a little bit of a bounce back year last year. Again, very weather dependent, over ninety-six hundred in attendance, over a thousand more than the previous two years. Revenues were up to forty-four thousand. We did increase fees for the twenty fifteen season. Hopefully with the pool liner project, that's a big complaint that we had, which is the surface on your feet. And then some of the improvements, we painted the interior of the pool hall last year, early last year as well. So hopefully some of the improvements will be a little more appealing pool for individuals to go to. These are the budget, operational budgets for the parks, forestry, swimming pool and recreation. A big driver in this is personnel cost, subset of that is the seasonal labor costs that we have, paying temporary wages. Tree contracting on the forestry side and this year in the park side as well, we do have a substantial amount that has gone to contracting removal of trees that has spiked the budget, especially on the forestry side. If you see over the last number of years, we do have some in the park side as well to address a few remaining trees there. And then just on the park side is maintenance of facilities, any projects that they have comes out of operations there. And the forestry, we do hope to reduce by around eighty-five thousand over the next four years. Golf course. The CIP items primarily are golf carts, batteries and mowers. Try and get this pulled up here again. The carts are on a eight-year replacement plan, previous to a couple of years ago, they're on a four- to five-year replacement plan. So it's something we've...
That was one of the, that was one of the questions I had. I thought when we had conversations...
That was one of the, that was one of the questions I had. I thought when we had conversation about the carts before, that we were going to slow down on purchasing carts, we're just going to strictly do batteries.
Doing battery, well, before we purchased carts every four to five years, we just purchased new carts, new carts, new carts. Now, we purchase carts every eight years and we purchase the batteries at the four-year timeframe, because batteries completely shot in that timeframe to extend the cart out another four years. So instead of buying all new carts every four years, it's buying carts every eight years and doing batteries in between.
Terrific. Well, I guess I've never really checked the carts out myself, so maybe I need to.
And yeah, it's something, encourage anyone to come out and take a look at. The big thing with them is, these aren't just individual, personal carts, these are commercial carts that get a lot of wear and tear, a lot of issues with over the, towards the end of the lifespan, seven, eight, nine years, that we do have additional maintenance cost on that. One thing I did talk to Brad on was, in the past, it was more of, I think, replacing carts that were needed on a regular basis, but it wasn't a great plan of replacing X number of every year. We are looking at reducing the number of carts from 52 to 48, so we have one less cart every four years, which will save money, but also getting it to where it's 12 carts every other year, so that we have a schedule and we know coming into it that it's not going to be a spike one year and come down and spike, it's a regular amount, so.
Was threatened by one of the citizens and simply said, "Don't take away our new golf carts."
The, the carts are.
Didn't say anything yet.
A huge revenue generator for the golf course as well. Having quality carts is appealing to golfers. We have had carts break down over the years, but if it's something where they're getting in carts and they're breaking down on hole five every other time they're out, they might not want to come to our golf course anymore. So it is something we have to be conscious of, of having carts and, in operation that.
Thank you.
Aren't something that are breaking down, but it is something we are being more conscious of and trying to reduce the number of carts. We do have to rent carts during tournaments, the larger tournaments, we might rent 48 or 50 carts to be brought in for some of these larger tournaments, but on average day, we might have 30, 35 carts out. On a busy average day, it might be 40, 42 carts out. But these carts are out, 18 holes, maybe two times, three times a day on some busy days. So they're, it's not just a personal cart where you might drive it once or twice a week.
Thank you.
So one note here, again, I have the expenditures and revenues showing the, in the last couple of years, we have had more revenues than expenditures outside of capital items, just from an operational standpoint. So that's something we're continuing to work towards is trying to increase that revenue so that we can cover the capital items through the budget as well. One item that we had been looking at for a number of years, a golf simulator, that's something moving forward with, that hopefully that can create some off-season income through concessions, through play, have a lot of excitement about it, where you can come in during the off-season, maybe prior to the season, start to either do, just hit some balls or play around on a course, simulate a course, so that, that's something where we can make use of our facility year-round, not just during the summer months. Rounds played were up last year, down from a five-year average, but were up last year over this year. Did have a very good fall, extended fall as well, so we hopefully anticipate that to improve next year as well. Season passes were up slightly over last year, but still down over the five-year timeframe. Something we continue to look at is, the golf course, who plays out there is kind of representative of our community and the demographics of our community, so trying to cater to that player. Fees are examined annually to remain competitive in the area. We do look at Schaefer and Fort Madison and Spirit Hollow as a couple of comparables that people can easily drive to in a day, so. On the Recplex, it's kind of odd to think, but it is a, in some instances, an aging facility, some of the initial infrastructure put in, whether it be the watering or irrigation system and some of the carpeting and different kitchen items are, we're seeing having to be replaced, not everything at once, but a fryer might break down or a cooler or carpeting might be wearing out. So it is at that point where we are spending a little money on some maintenance and.
How old is the Recplex?
It is, is 15 years now.
Wow. Wow.
This is a carryover from last year, didn't have, is from a study from last year, but just wanted to reiterate from that study. And from 2012 to 2014, there's 85 total tournaments at the Recplex, 2,376 teams, and they estimate 1,600 of these teams were from an hour or more away. So they're, based on that study, in 2014, they estimated over $2 million in direct local spending from traveling teams, whether it be hotel or food or shopping or gas. So outside of revenues at the Recplex, it does have a good, very good impact on the community as well, on the retail and shopping in the community and go out there on a weekend, especially on some of these larger tournaments, and it's amazing the number of people that are out there.
That is for sure.
One note was, last year, I think was one of the first years that we have had a positive balance between expenditures and revenues, again, outside of capital items, but that's a good trend to see. This is a summary of a tournament's events at the Recplex. As you see, there is a snowball co-ed softball tournament, February 13th. Doesn't quite kick off the season, just kind of an off-season event, but, and then at the end of March, startup tournaments and runs through the end of October. So very busy schedule as always. There are three open.
The beaster bunny race?
Yeah.
The beaster bunny.
There are three open weekends, sometimes those get filled, well, we can run our own tournament and, but at the time we forward to this, we're only three open weekends. Generally, we might have one open weekend a year after it's all said and done. The major tournament, the Monster Match U Soccer Tournament, just keeps growing and growing and getting to a point where it might not be able to grow too much more. They're played down at Bracewell this year and some other fields, so it's a pretty large event.
Is there talk about partnering with the new Fort Madison one?
Haven't had too much discussion yet, they're still kind of getting their feet under them. I think that might be an option. Some of the trends, as you see, the league teams are steady or slightly down. Slow pitch softball, 94 this past year, 105 over the three-year average. We did not have a men's fall league for the first time in quite a while. There's more, more people wanting to play co-ed than just a men's league, so that didn't have the men's fall league, which reduced the number of days we were open over the fall. Fetch pitch softball is up and soccer was up, volleyball is down slightly. Flag football, we had been offering tackle football the last few years, that's no longer offered at the Recplex. It's just flag football now. There's dwindling numbers on that and there's an association.
What happened to the tackle football?
There's a assoc, and I don't remember what the name of it is, I'd have to ask Kirk. Burlington Tackle Football Association, there's I think two third and fourth grade teams from Burlington, two third and fourth grade teams, or fifth and sixth grade teams and then one fifth and sixth grade team from West Burlington, then they just play kind of in this regional area. There's not enough teams just to support it, just in Burlington, it's kind of the outside communities as well.
Okay.
And revenues were up, concessions were down in 2014, somewhat dependent on the number, the attendance, did have a couple rain outs, cancellations, and then the men's fall league reduced admissions a little bit as well. We did, just, Monday, we have a resolution to increase some of the fees and then concessions, he's looking at a quarter increase on some of the items there, so anticipate some additional revenue through that. Parks equipment in FY17, forestry chipper truck, parks truck mower, utility vehicle, Recplex mower, pool filters and golf course batteries. Those are all through local option sales tax and hotel motel. Again, the equipment is vital to their operation, making sure they have quality equipment. And some of the projects in FY17 is the Flint River Trail, Phase One South, 698,000 in grants, 94,000 through lost and 30,000 through donations. Phase One is the final kind of connector between the ramp behind Big Muddy's and the trail at Cash Street at Case. That's broken into two sections, Phase One South will continue from that ramp behind the barrier wall up to Oak Street, and then we are looking to apply for future grants to get from Oak Street to Cash in front of Case, so that we actually have a connection from downtown, which I think will increase the usage quite a bit. The county continues to work on their portion connecting down to Milltown Road, so that will be a great project to be complete and be behind us when that is done. North Hill Fountain is in the budget for 100,000, that is 100% donation, they're still working on that. Kind of a private individual on our Parks Advisory Committee is spearheading that, may not be done in FY17, might get pushed out, but there is no, no city money in that. The pool roof replacement, golf course pump house, Recplex Division Street entry, one thing we've been working on, they own the lot, just to the west of the Recplex, the soccer field's there, and having an entry drive similar to like a B Stadium for overflow parking. Parking's always an issue out there, so getting a paved drive into that, that we can use it more often, something we're excited about. Historic preservation design guidelines at 13,500 through grants and 1,500 local for our local historic areas and appropriateness of building in those. And then trail maintenance, our annual cost of $5,000. Future items, future CIPs are equipment through the park system, mowers and trucks, a chipper, skid steer and tractor and golf carts and batteries. This is an image of Phase Three of the Flint River Trail, that was just recently completed, as we continue to work on that. The Mason Road Pedestrian Trail, that's one we applied, received TAP funds four, three years ago. That connects Ed Stone School to the west along Mason Road to the Sunrise West Development, that there'll be a connection, a sidewalk connection, that students would be able to walk to school there. So I think the, hopefully we can get that done as, as soon as funds are available. I know a lot of people, school included, would like to see that connection for students. Unfortunately, with TAP funds, it is, you apply and then it's three years later that you're able to expend those. Flint River Trail, Phase One North, looking to hopefully complete FY20 and 21. Playgrounds at Dankwart and White Park, doing improvements there, looking for foundation, other additional funding for those. Dankwart restroom, Perkins parking lot, ADA sidewalks and lighting in our parks, pool updates and the Recplex shelter and playground improvements. A lot of these are partnering with groups, foundations and applying for grants to bring in additional dollars to cover those.
Can you clarify too, I've got a lady that's watching right now, aren't we doing all the CIP projects for the parks in the same, in the same year? Or isn't that the game plan anyways to, to do most of the, her concern was that some parks were going to get overlooked and what I, what I had read earlier was that a lot of the stuff that was going to get done to parks was going to get done the same, was getting done the same year.
We, we do spread that out, so it isn't unfortunately all in the same year. I think there is something about our annual operating budget that showed the amount in one year, but it, it is spread out over a number of years.
Okay, well.
If we, if we're able to get starker funds or additional funding, we can move stuff up, but. If she has a question on a certain park or timing, we can certainly look at that and talk to her on that, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to her.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions or anything, I can answer at any time, so.
Okay, you guys good?
I'm good.
Cruising.
Sounds good. Steve, you're.
You want to stand up, take a, I want you, well, ready, I gotta, I'm gonna get the clicker from Eric here real quick. Remember, Steve, you have to almost swallow that mic in order for people to hear you. Got to get that right in front of your face.
I've always felt my voice carried pretty well, but we can.
What?
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. You want me, should we go ahead and get started? Okay, then we'll trickle in, trickle out. Again, this is the, I'm putting together the budget presentation for Public Works. Hopefully this will work. Here are the discussion points. I'm going to look at this more of a broad view of the whole department and not get down with a lot of the individual departments exactly what we're doing, but overall, we're going to look at the Operational Performance Centers that are under Public Works. I'm going to look heavily at the, what's in the FY17 budget, make a comparison to that with 16. Going to look a lot at what's going on with vehicle replacement, the capital improvement program, and some, discuss some operating budget concerns and then kind of some few, few future, future budget concerns. It's a tongue twister. These are the various performance centers that are under the umbrella of Public Works. You'll see on the left, we have what I call our major operating, that would be Public Works Administration, Engineering, Transit, Street Maintenance, Snow Removal, Sanitary Sewer Maintenance, Property Maintenance and Vehicle Maintenance. The others on the right are what I'm calling kind of non-oper, other or non-operating. Essentially, all of these, our Property Maintenance Division has something to do with the general oversight of these budgets and there are various aspects that, that they oversee on that. When you look at our total budget, the total budget is a little over $8 million. In that operating, those left categories I'm talking about, that's about $6.5 million. And in the other category is about $1.6 million. The numbers on there that I show with the percentages, basically, this is comparing the percent in the operating. Almost 100% of all the Personnel Services are in the operating. Contractual Services is actually favoring more on the other budgets, and again, Commodities and Capital Outlay is 90-plus percent in the operating budget. Overall, the operating budget, those, those divisions on the left are 80% of our total budget with the, the, what I'm calling the non-operating, the ones that Property Maintenance are supporting are the remaining 20%. This takes a look at all three of those in a little more detail. I think one of the things you'll find, our budget compared to the others, is that we're not quite as heavily personnel percentage-wise based. The overall budget, you can see, we're at 43% is Personnel, 27% Contractual, Commodities end of it, 17 and Capital Outlays 11.4. When you break it down and just look at the operating, now it increases, it's more, 55% is in the Personnel, Contractual 11, Commodities 19 and Capital Outlay 13.5. The thing here, the majority of the other budget is various things that are actually contractual in nature in the other budgets. Again, we have no, hardly any people in that budget, we're contracting services to manage those. In terms of this presentation and what I'm doing, I'm going to be looking at a comparison heavily between 17 and 16. Those same numbers that you saw before, we're generally in here. This is in the overall budget that changed, a two and a half percent change in Personnel, Contractual Services 140%, which is 6.8. Overall, Commodities is, is actually slightly down. There's variations with some between other and the, the major operating. Here's a big change here, $511,000 in the capital components of this budget, and we're, I'm going to talk about that in much greater detail. Overall though, as I present this, I want to kind of concentrate on this operating of that 80% of our budget. In particular, I'm going to talk about some contractual services that make up this $48,000 and the Capital Outlay, which is, in this area is, is 500, almost $510,000. So when you do look at the overall budget, there is a $740,000 increase or a 10% increase, of which 600,000 of that is in the major operating and 140 in this non-operating. When it comes to the budget and Personnel Services, I'm really not going to address that much. It's, it's a two and a half percent or 89,000, which is a cost of living. We're not changing any of our employee complement. We're just a little under 49 FTE, of which 42 is, is full-time employees and the other seven FTE are made up of, of part-time employees. So in this presentation, unless there's a need to, I'm not really going to address much with employees other than the, and that, basically that Personnel Service is all a cost of living. The Contractual Services, in the operating budget, there's about 63,000 and that's comprised mostly of additional vehicle maintenance fees for transit and a new program I'm planning on trying to, requesting to get is some routing software. Again, the Commodities, there was an overall. Again, the Commodities, there was an overall essential wash. The Capital Outlay for the total was five hundred and eleven, of five hundred and nine of that was in the operating portion. Three hundred and fifty of that is in sewer maintenance, a hundred and twenty-one from a budget perspective in the comparisons in transit, and thirty-seven thousand in Engineering. And each of these things is, I want to, I'm going to concentrate a lot of my presentation on why we're doing these things. First part is we're talking about vehicles in Public Works. We have between eighty-five and ninety vehicles. Typically, we replace four to five Public Works non-bus vehicles per year. This budget's replacing two transit vehicles on an annual basis. In FY twenty-seven, we'll look at that. Our Operations Manager, Chris, does a good job of replacing vehicles, but this is one where we're looking at a lot of the equipment. We'll illustrate that a little bit better, that is support, I call kind of support equipment, not the major equipment of our operation. Many of the vehicles we deal with are kind of hand-me-downs, where we've either got them from somewhere, we're taking a vehicle and somebody else is using the rest of the useful life. Most of the vehicles are funded by road use tax and sewer. The buses, when we look at those and we get those, those are, when we get the money to replace them, they're eighty-five percent grant-funded. This is a look at the, generally the more or less vehicles that we're replacing in that five years in Public Works. And if you take a look at, we have, I said eighty-five to ninety, but ninety makes a round number, and I said four to five each year. If you take those ninety vehicles and you replace five per year, that's eighteen years that we're keeping most of these vehicles in a replacement cycle. So for the most part, when we're replacing vehicles, we really need to replace them to keep them updated before the maintenance costs start to rise. This is that minor equipment that I was talking about. The asphalt crack router, a pull-behind compressor, a steel wheel roller, pavement breaker for the back, a walk-behind saw, Craftco car tattle and kettle, and the planer for the skid steer. So these are those seven items that we're replacing in that fifth year instead of a lot of other major equipment. When it comes to the transitioning of the vehicles this year, we are, what we're looking to do, Property Maintenance has an old van we need to get rid of. Engineering has an old truck and an old car. They don't have a sports car, by the way. But essentially, we're taking the Public Works Director's vehicle, and they're going to go down, and Property Maintenance is going to use that. And the Streets Operations Vehicle is going to be handed down to Engineering. Overall, we're replacing, we're eliminating three and only replacing two vehicles in this budget. And how are we doing that? Basically, I don't know if that car's going to look that nice, but anyhow, taking and getting a new vehicle for the Public Works Director, and like I said, his vehicle's going over to Property Maintenance, and those funds are coming out of road use tax. The vehicle that the Public Works Director, I typically drive, is one that's probably more used in, driven out of town and going places, and getting a newer vehicle like this will have a better gas mileage, so it'll make a lot more sense than the current vehicle.
How often do you, would you say that vehicle goes out of town in a year? I mean, it's kind of hard to say.
Probably average twice a month, something like that.
Okay.
I mean, right now, mostly it's been taken out of town by me. The library has often taken, been the second use of taking that vehicle out of town for the most part. But it will get better gas mileage. And again, the street vehicle that we're looking to replace, we're using road use tax, it's being split between road use tax and sewer. Engineering is also, they have another vehicle that we're probably going to auction off, but they're hoping that there'll be a good used police vehicle when they trade some of theirs off, so again, we're taking another hand-me-down in the fleet. This is an overall view of the various vehicles that are being replaced and in the years. This is a list of all the various vehicles. I'm not really going to get into a lot of detail in years where we are replacing them, but you can see the total amount is a little over three million dollars. And this next slide takes that three million dollars that we're talking about and breaking it down where the percentage is going by the various funds. So if we take a look, road use tax is, there's about almost nine hundred and ninety thousand that's coming out of there, and that ends up thirty-one percent. The sewer is the twenty-one point six, or about six hundred and seventy-five. Grants is a big portion of this, that's eight eighty-five percent for buses, and only seven percent's coming out of the general fund. Taking that left side of the chart in a little more detail, talking about, this relates to the hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase that's in the operational budget of the vehicle maintenance. Of all that, a little over three million dollars, almost one point four going on, one point five million of that is in the various buses. And out of that, is over forty-seven percent of all that, almost forty percent of it's being covered by grants, and only that seven percent is being covered by the general fund. The tough situation to get this grant funding, there is a priority system, and it's really based on age and miles, and we haven't had any vehicles replaced in the near future. So for budgetary purpose, I don't know whether we'll get them, but I put two each year. And we do have a lot of, I think, six or seven vehicles that we got in two thousand ten, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, that probably, when the funding comes, will probably come just about all at once, but anyhow, I don't, any questions on that? Okay. See if it wants to go? It didn't go, Eric. Is it me or?
Yeah.
Did I go one or two already? Okay, I'm going to move from the vehicles now to the capital improvement projects. There's a variety of capital improvement projects that are listed. Overall, about thirty-five million dollars. This is the various projects. I'm going to talk, I'm just using this sheet as a general. This is the year that a lot of these projects are being funded, and like the last sheet, of that thirty-five million dollars, this is the funding sources for that thirty-five million dollars and the various percentages. So you can kind of, I'll go back to road use tax is covering nine point two, the sewer fund, three point nine. We're using revenue bonds for almost forty-two percent. GEO bonds are covering twelve and a half, grants are covering fourteen percent. TIFF GEO bonds are covering seventeen percent, and there's some outside entities that are covering about one percent of that thirty-five million dollars. What do these projects generally consist of? These are some site-specific projects. The Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, we all know, I don't know, maybe, hopefully the mayor does or doesn't know, but he wasn't here Monday when Jim kind of sprung the news that the bridge previously was three million, now it's up to five million dollars. Again, a million dollars of that will be from the state fund. We do have the Mount Pleasant Street HMA rehabilitation project. This is where some of the other funds are coming from West Burlington. We've got the Agency Street West Project, that is scheduled, that RISE project, that's scheduled in seventeen. Agency Street East, this is the Manor Project, that's presently scheduled in eighteen. I said this one's seventeen, maybe I didn't say that. Eighteen for this one. Depending on how that development comes, we may need to move that project forward. And the Washington Street Improvements, that's a proposed SDP project. We've proposed it, we put it in seventeen, it never got funded, it didn't get funded in eighteen, we're continuing to put it out there. So that, I say that's proposed, whether we'll get the money for that or not, I understand Fort Madison has got at least another year of projects that have been trumping us out in the past. There are some annual projects that are in the street budget. The street resurfacing, I think that's one number I didn't change. That number is not quite that high. That was from a previous one, but anyhow, it is a five-year program, that number's not quite that high. It's about two million dollars less. The miscellaneous streets program, we're putting a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars per year. The seal code, that's a hundred and twenty-nine, one point two million dollars, and I say the first year, that should be, another one I didn't get corrected in my mistakes, that's being covered over the first three years. There is an ADA ramp transition plan, that's fifty thousand dollars for each year. Sewer projects.
So Steve, one point two per year for three years?
No, it's a total of one point two-nine for the three years. It's, like I said, I, when I was checking, and one of the mistakes I caught, but evidently didn't correct before I printed it and put this together, this is actually scheduled for the first three years.
Okay.
And that number, let me just go back a minute. The miscellaneous streets is four point five eight-two, it's not that six million dollars. I didn't get that corrected in the narrative, so. At one version, there was that much money proposed, but when Jim started changing monies and shifting everything to make the budget work, he lowered that amount. So I'm going to move forward. The sewer projects, we've got one more project scheduled in FY seventeen for the Cascade Sewer, that's totaling six hundred and two thousand. The Maslow, ongoing for the next five years, we've got almost thirteen and a half million dollars programmed into this budget. There is continuing miscellaneous sewer rehab fund, about a little over two hundred and fifty thousand a year, something I will talk about later. I've added into the budget an annual sewer cleaning program, and the site-specific sewer project is the Vineyard Area where we've programmed in three hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I still didn't quite understand that, because the way I read it, it said that after we do it, there's still no guarantee that it's really going to help the area, or I don't know, the Grattan area or something like that, all that much, or was it Grattan Street?
Well, I mean, it's a very flat area, and basically, you know, and we talked about it, this is a preliminary, this is a number that we put in the budget, kind of as a placeholder. We've not done the survey, we've kind of done the cursory, so we can get it numbered here, so that if it's approved, then we can move forward. And once again, the plans and specifications, we'll put in more detail when we get the final survey. A lot of it's going to be cleaning out the ditches, and there is some cost sharing proposed in this with some of the driveway, where we're putting in new culverts underneath the driveways. We're expecting that to be a fifty-fifty share from the homeowners, and widening and cleaning the ditches so the area drains.
Yeah, I was just going to, my only concern, or my only question on that was, I thought there was a less expensive way to address that problem with doing some cleaning up so that the manholes weren't covered up and.
Well, there's really not a lot of manholes in sewers, that, you know, to my knowledge, there's only one major sewer pipe in that area, and I think there's maybe another. It's kind of a flat drainage area that's working in the drainage ditches, and some of it doesn't run off very well because the ditches have filled in in time.
It's been a bad area for a while.
Yeah.
There's really no catch bases. It's, there's an open sewer pipe that goes into a ditch, the ditch goes, takes on the water, and then it goes into this open sewer pipe. It's not a catch base like you would see in a street that's got, that has curbs and gutters, so.
Right, it's, you know, it's generally the whole area is a seal code street, and everything's kind of running off, going to the ditches, and to my knowledge, there's one mayor, major sewer pipe that is official storm sewer that's draining a lot of the water. A lot of the others kind of go.
That's it, that one?
Well, there's one major one. Again, when they do the sewer, when they do the survey, we'll get a better handle on all of that.
There's, in the eighties, we used to have a program where they went on an annual basis and kept those ditches cleaned out and.
Oh, they had to, they dropped that some?
Yeah, they quit doing that. They quit recognizing that as part of our sewer system, and it is part of the city sewer system. Even though there's no piping or anything, it's still the way the city was designed, and that's how they handle stormwater. And this isn't, if this is successful, I don't see this as being the only one, because people are going to see this, and they're going to want it all over town.
I think from, this is again, I've used this term before, maybe Annie hasn't heard it, a little BS on my part, that's before Steve. And, but from what I've heard, from the others, from a staff's point of view, that was one of the, kind of the budgetary cuts. When manpower and stuff was reduced, we kind of took away the ditch cleaning effort. Now, when you live in the county, they have programs that handle that, but typically, us and a lot of other cities, and in some areas, and you'll see, I think even here, some of the homeowners will go out and kind of clean their ditch and keep the flow going. And some of the other problem is the culvert pipes that go under driveways. Those have either filled in or, for some reason, have gotten squished, squished in time, but that's part of the problem in this area as well.
Can you, can you address why we would need, well, can you address what cleaning, what the sewer cleaning is going to do for us, what the benefit of that's going to be?
Yep. Right this minute.
Okay, I'll wait for you.
Okay. Finishing up, the miscellaneous projects. Something we've added this year is a light replacement program for LED light replacement. We've added twenty-five thousand dollars for each year. Inevitably, it seems like every time we're turning around, something's coming up, whether it's on Roosevelt or some other street, or Jefferson or Central, someplace where we need to replace the lights and put in the LED lights and change it out and basically save money. So as we work through this with the city manager, we've put money in there to be set aside, so that we have money and set aside to handle this. We have added another year of funding for the traffic camo replacement in FY nineteen. We've replaced one, we've got one scheduled again, well, we haven't replaced it. We've got the camera, we kind of now have to wait. It's going to be on Division Street, we're going to look at replacing that. You've got to kind of do it when the weather's appropriate, and that'll be sometime in the spring. And something that's been out there, we finally scheduled funding, it's been proposed in the past for the parking lot at Sixth and Washington. Operational discussion points, like I said earlier, the personnel is static, it's got a two-and-a-half cost of living, there's no proposed personnel changes, I'm not really going to address that. Majority of operational increases are related to the capital items, and this I will talk a lot about here, Mayor, that is the combination vac jet unit, funding for the two buses. I'm going to talk about the transit routing software, the engineering replacement survey. I'm also going to address what we've kind of done with some of the extra road use tax dollars from the Street Department Maintenance, and then talk about the operational concerns in transit. When we take a look at the, now I'm going back to that other budget again, the operating, where we're talking about that six point five billion, these are the various divisions that are funded out of that. When we talk about administration, that is covered by general fund and road use tax. The fees for engineering is coming out of fees, those are project fees. We take project fees to support that division. Transit, that has general fund, that has fees that we're charging, the paying the customers, as well as we do get a small amount of fees from West Burlington, and then it's also supported by the state and the federal dollars, we get to run that. Streets is coming out of road use tax as well as snow removal, of course, sewer is being handled by sewer. Vehicle maintenance and property maintenance, again, those are fees supported by those. When we work on a vehicle, basically, those fees are charged back to that vehicle maintenance charges for that department, and the same when Property Maintenance works on various places. I think you heard Ron to talk about, when they got rid of somebody, they started using property maintenance, and so now when our people are working there, their vehicle maintenance fee charges to the library budget. And you can kind of see, this is a percentage of all those again. The general fund contribution to our operating is very low, six point three. Road use tax, thirty-one percent. The sewer fees are seventeen. The fees that we're talking about here are thirty-two percent, and the state and federal money is thirteen percent of those fees. I think this is, if this is what I think you're asking about the sewer, are we talking about sewer cleaning?
Yep.
Okay, this is where I'm talking about addressing that. Currently with the equipment, we have one vac truck and two jets. This one only vacuums, this one only jets. The, in this fiscal year, as we go through the replacement, the oldest jet truck is scheduled for replacement. I'm looking at this as an opportunity to replace it with a combination unit. What this will do is provide what I call proper equipment duplication. Right now, and it just happened for the last two weeks, this vehicle's been out, was in for service, and so we really had no vehicle within the city of Burlington's control to provide, if we needed to, you know, clean out, we had a sewer, we had to vac everything out. We ourselves had no vehicle. What we're proposing is what we call a combination unit, where it, this is the vacuum, and right up here, it's a little tough to tell, but that's the jetter, it's all in one unit. You kind of ask, why are we looking to do this? Frankly, other places I've operated, that's what we had. We didn't have the separate pieces of equipment. And I, as I've looked and analyzed it, I think that's okay, when we had combination sewers, where you're typically, you aren't trying to clean the sanitary sewers on a regular basis. I did contact, I think about eight other Public Works, and of course, as usual, not everybody responds, but I did get this from Muscatine. They have two combination units. Des Moines is able to do it with one. Cedar Falls has two combination units. And they also graciously provided me with comments, which I've included here. Matt from Muscatine, my opinion is combination trucks are the only way to go. They work well for all our cleaning needs. Lyle from Cedar Falls, we've had combination units since the mid-seventies. There is a frequent need to vac a line after or during jet cleaning. With the combo. With a combo unit, the same crew can do both, a lot more efficient than coming in later with a different crew. Brett on the, and from West Des Moines, uh, we've had combo units since the eighties. With the efficiency and flexibility of a combo unit, we only have one sewer cleaning machine. I didn't know, but I think part of the reason that they probably have one, they can easily have agreement with if they need anything from, from Des Moines to, to cover that if they have problems. Did it go, Eric? Okay. Now, this ties back to the cleaning of the sewers, uh, which is, is, is a capital project. When we had combination sewers here in town, you had a lot of the rainwater help kind of flush again, cleaning those. But with the separate storm and sanitary sewers, there is a need to provide routine cleaning. Currently, our crews do go out, it's not like we ignore it, we, if we know we've had problem areas, we go out and we clean on a routine basis. What we're calling the hotspots are problem areas. Recently, when we have done some work and gone back, we've been rehabilitating some sewers, uh, we found a lot of those sewers, when we were cleaning them, nearly half full. And eventually, when those fill up.
What?
Half-full of, of material. That's because we're not cleaning them.
Material?
Well, whatever you wanna call it.
That's all right, that's all right.
Sewer, sewer material.
Tim calls it product.
Product.
Would you like a sample?
See, Tim's one of those guys, he may say it's, it's poo to you, but it's bread and butter to him, Steve. All right, let's move on, Steve.
Let's move then.
All right. Failure to clean these can result, it, it has, honestly, it hasn't been a problem in here, it has in other places that I've worked, but it hasn't been a problem, but it will eventually result in major backup. And then, if you're not, have a routine program, people have the ability to come back and claim because you didn't clean it, that's the reason that sewer backed up, that's why I had to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on my basement. If you have a routine cleaning program, that claim goes away. When you can go back and say, yes, we cleaned the sewer, we've got a five-year program, we cleaned the sewer according to schedule and we cleaned it, uh, three years ago, then that claim, uh, provides the city, uh, protection from having to absorb any of those claims. So as, to look at this, I've looked, I originally looked at two options. To purchase the jet, as we said, so we'll continue doing what we've always done, but then we're really not equipped to clean the sewers. So then we put it annually, put a CIP, a capital improvement program there to clean the sewers. I took a look at all the numbers, all the sewers and the costs that we got for cleaning recently, and we'd have to spend about two hundred thousand dollars annually to clean the sewers every four to five years. On the flip side, uh, I said, okay, what if we, I think if we, if we get the combination unit, then we have the capabilities providing the cleaning. It's the same type of unit that a, a contractor's gonna use. My preference there would be to add, uh, one full-time person. As I work with Chris, one of his concerns is, if we do that with what we've got now, where are we gonna take it away from all our other maintenance programs so we have manpower to go out there and clean the sewers? That's why I'm adding one FTE. Uh, as we've gone through this, a kind of a, a variation of that would be to go ahead and still buy the unit, but look at hiring two seasonal labors, which would free up two full-time staff. And I, I do think this makes a lot of sense. A couple of things we do that are labor-intensive, this is when we go out and, and stripe the streets. You can't really see it in here, but there's a five-man crew in this, in this whole aspect when we're out there, not cleaning, painting the streets, the street painting and the, and that. There are two of those people, we, we really need three full-time, but we could get by with two seasonal people filling those voids. In addition, when we do the crack sealing typically later in the year, that's another one where it's manpower-intensive, we could easily free up two people there and, and utilize seasonal employees. So I think that, when I looked at variation two, I think this really has a, a lot of, makes a lot of sense. What you're gonna see in the currently proposed budget is adding the combination unit and not adding the two hundred, but adding a hundred thousand dollars for the annual cleaning. So that's what's in the proposed budget that's before you now.
But we should, how regular should we be cleaning the sewers?
It's a standard, an industry standard is anywhere from three to five years.
But they al, they also have sewers that they have to clean almost on a monthly basis, like Indian Terrance.
Right. That's some of these hotspots. That's what we're calling these hotspots, Tim. We do, we do do that because we know there's no problems and we protect ourselves there. But we're not cleaning every sewer in town like we should.
Right.
This next slide kind of tailors into this a little bit. I kind of came up with this when I was listening to Don's presentation. What we have here in Burlington, you take a typical household, uh, the water that's generated, often coming into what we have, our old combination sewers, definitely the, the water, water that's coming from your use, bath, toilets, et cetera, that definitely goes in the lateral that goes out to the combination. In a lot of sewers, we actually have sump pumps in there, if they, people have a basement, they have a sump pump. A lot of times, that same water's going in that same lateral and going into the sanitary in, into, and it was okay when it's going into a combination sewer. But when we went back and we separated these, what we did when we separated these, we typically, because of the depth, and this line was already coming in here and we didn't want to dig deeper, we converted this old storm sewer, combined sewer into the sanitary sewer. And then we installed a new storm sewer and we only took out of that the stuff that was going into the catch basins. Primarily, the reason we did this is because of the shallower depths. But then you also have, we'll go back to this other water coming in, you've got, like I said, the sump, you have a lot of foundation drains, oftentimes, those are tied to your lateral, going out to the old, uh, sanitary sewer, and you have roof drains. Typically, for instance, you might have seen when they were doing smoke testing with the Masl and they did it with the other sewers, when you put smoke and you fill it in here, that smoke's gonna fill up this lateral. And if there are roof drains, you'll see smoke coming out of the roof, I mean, not out of the roof, but out of the, out of the vents. Those, we've actually, uh, we've got letters getting ready to go out for the Masl to have people eliminate these. Whether they're reconnected after we verify that they're eliminated, I don't know, but you remember when Don was talking, as we've got our, our sanitary sewers, we have built-in collection basins, so when we get all the extra water, we can store it. Where we're getting a lot more water than those we're typically designed for and we're having, when that water comes in there, we have what we call a sanitary sewer overflow. And those are things that the DNR's looking at. And I honestly think that at someday, we're gonna have to look at the sump pump, the foundation drains, and get those out of this lateral. I think if we, I think that's something we need to look at, and I think that's something that DNR's gonna probably force us to look at a little harder somewhere down the road.
How, how far down the road are?
I'm not going out and asking them, but I do know when they come and they look and we have sanitary sewer overflows every year, eventually, uh, they know we're separating, but when they go back to the Hawkeye sewer, and these are coming out of the Hawkeye sewer, there's some point in time that we're gonna have to take a harder look at that.
The state already mandates people that live in rural areas that have septic systems, that they be inspected at time of transfer, and if they don't pass inspection, they have to be upgraded. And I can, I can see that, uh, being a directive coming from the DNR for, for homes that are on, on city sewers in the not-too-distant future. It's already been brought up at the state level, it's been brought up to state legislature.
Oh, that it's coming.
It didn't make it out of committee, but it's, one of these years, it's, it's gonna happen, it's gonna come.
I mean, other cities have taken a strong approach to this. I know Indian, and Indianola even kind of goes back and, and provides some money to help this take place, I think, with the homeowners. But it's gonna be, it's something, in my opinion, facing it, it isn't anything we're covering in this budget, but it is something I think that we need to be cognizant of and take a look at. The other area where you do get in, in water is sometimes you'll have cracks, a lot, most of this old pipe is clay, and we know that clay tile eventually somehow gets damaged or where these laterals come in, uh, you're destroying the initial integrity and some of them weren't put in very well and there's water coming in there. And so when you got a groundwater table sitting up in here, that water's gonna come into those sewers as well.
Back to the sump pumps, people that put in new sumps are, are not allowed, right, by law, or rules to, to do, they have to put them out in the yard?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I, do, do you know, Eric, is that a, do we, do we, we don't really look at anything like that in time or anything, do we?
Just our normal inspection process.
Okay.
Something we noticed, but.
Anyway.
That one sometimes is easier to change than the foundation drains.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I changed my foundation drains a long time ago because they were plugged and the water came into my basement rather than, you know, so.
So, but that when you.
I took that out.
When you, okay. Okay, moving on. Did it move? Okay. Second thing, next thing I wanted to kind of talk about in the budget is the, the road use tax. When we got the road use tax, that was a big help. Basically, when we looked at the FY fifteen budget, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted annually to do a lot of these concrete repairs like you're seeing on agency here. When we put the FY sixteen budget together, I proposed increasing that from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty, and then adding ten thousand dollars a year for the next five years till we got up to two hundred thousand. When the additional gas tax came in last year, Jim, Jim actually took that a hundred and sixty and bumped it up in last year's budget to two hundred thousand. What we're proposing here is to continue using that at two hundred thousand. And... Did it move? Okay. Here's, Chris put together for us a lot of the things, for me at least, a lot of the things that we had, got accomplished this last year at these various locations. I think we got a lot more accomplished because we had material and dollars and it was a big benefit to the streets. And I, I can't help but think somebody, or each of you in town, didn't see somebody, I know the stuff on Central Division, I saw a lot traveling, but we were pretty much all over town. I know you, some of you commented on the asphalt work on agency and stuff as well, but.
Agreed.
This is a big benefit and I think that's a, that's a, that's a good thing.
Well, concrete repairs were remarkable, those guys done a great job, I'm just, and they were fast.
Right.
Really, for, for what they were doing.
Yeah, I thought they did a pretty good job all the way around. I was really pleased with that.
We do have a good crew, a lot of good people there, and I appreciate hearing, hearing that.
That is for sure.
I do have some things with transit, uh, I would prefer not to discuss, but I think I need to discuss to, to bring you a little bit up to date. This is what's happening, rides have been trending downward, the paratransit rides have increased, fare revenue's been trending downward, good thing here, advertising's increasing, vehicle maintenance costs are increasing, we've had no new buses in the last three to four years. Saturday service, which we talked about a long time ago, uh, that is still operating a lot less efficiency, efficient than, than the Monday through Friday, but, uh, it, but it has improved, it has improved with everything we've done. The summer program was a big success, in my opinion, we got about an extra sixty-one hundred rides. As I mentioned earlier, proposed a software record-keeping to improve our efficiency and statistical recording. And another aspect in this year's budget is the transit drivers took a wage reduction three years ago, and this'll be the first year that they're receiving that pay increase. This is to try to illustrate a little bit what's happened with the rides. This is a, a monthly four-quarter moving average on the total rides reported each quarter, and you can see that trend's basically gone from a little over fifty-five thousand down to fifty-three thousand on a quarterly basis. Conversely, the, the, uh, disabled or the paratransit rides have been steadily increasing and increased a lot these last few quarters. What's that mean to our operation, if the slide comes up? Our total system, this is that same quarterly average, looking at the rides per revenue hour, that's the hours that the drivers are out there driving. And that has steadily been declining as well, but that average is around twelve. And for instance, the Flin Hills route, that's probably one of our busy, steadier, uh, fixed routes, that averages eighteen point five rides per revenue hour. Paratransit, on the other hand, only averages two point seven rides per revenue hour, really time-consuming for the amount of rides that we get out of it. Saturday service, like I told you, that's improved. When I talked to you before, that was right around five and a half to six rides per revenue hour. And the changes that we've made, and I think it's about as good as it's gonna get, does have that averaging up to seven rides per revenue hour. Some things I looked at, why this little bump here? I think that had an influence from the summer rides, remember, we got those sixty-one hundred rides. Part of the reason this has also taken a decrease, two things I see, because of all the paratransit rides that we have, we've actually had to bring in an additional driver for about three to four hours to handle all those additional rides on a daily basis. We were getting a lot of complaints, we weren't able to handle them, and that's just something we've had to do. And the school rides are down this, this fiscal year so far. Actually, compared to a year ago, the total rides from the first two quarters of this year compared to last year are down five thousand. So I kind of wondered, why is that? And I think one of the reasons is the weather, believe it or not. I asked one of the drivers, he said, you know, when the weather's good, I probably on a certain ride have fifteen riders per hour. When that weather turns nasty or cold, I'm usually twenty-five to thirty. I think in part, I don't know if that's total, but we've had a pretty mild winter and I think a lot of people, instead of spending the money, may walk home. I don't know if gas has anything to do with, people are able to afford more cars or, or do that, but definitely so far statistically, the rides for the students have gone, are down this fiscal year.
Is the, the paratransit, that's, that's Monday through Saturday, right?
Uh, we have the capabilities on Saturday, we don't typically, we don't schedule any special rides, I mean, we.
Okay, so that's Monday, so it's typically Monday.
Really Monday through Friday. We have a, an awful lot of people we pick up on a routine basis to go to the hospital and, and bring back. And, and one of the beauties is, and some of the issues kind of go back to the buses, typically, we've got some buses when they're operating and we don't have a problem that hold four or five wheelchairs, that's a big blessing and we can increase our efficiency. But when those go down and we've got that many, four or five people waiting, sometimes we'll have to send a second bus out there.
Well, I'd be honest with you, I'm really not concerned too much with that number. It's kind of give and take, you know, but I'm just grateful that I don't have to use that service.
And I, and I will say, I'm not proposing it, we can, by rules, charge double for paratransit rides. I, I don't think that would be received very well, so there's no proposal for an extra funding source to do that. So, I'm, I'm just saying, we could, but we, it's not being proposed. Another area that's of concern is the vehicle maintenance. This chart really shows what's happened, going back from thirteen, these are actual numbers, this is proposed. We've gone from a hundred and eleven to two hundred and six thousand, and the cost per mile has gone from forty-eight to, again, both of these have almost doubled. You're asking, why is that? We have a series of new buses that were new at the time, these are these era buses, and a bunch of them were put together and we've had a lot of vehicle problems with them. I think we've got six or almost half of our fleet is from that era, um, and we're having a lot of issues. We did get one new bus in two thousand and twelve. We've had no new buses, based on the funding that I'm seeing now, targeted for FY sixteen, I think will be scheduled for, for next year, and then that's why we're putting two a year. I mean, we may get more than that, but we've only got two budgeted. We did this last year, purchased two older buses, um, and part of that, that was a dual-fold, one, we kind of didn't need them with all the others that were going down. And secondly, the way the funding formula works, I think we're gonna get those replaced in a quicker fashion, unless they change some things from what I'm told. So, I mean, those buses hopefully will help us get some of the other buses replaced.
On, on the buses that you had problems with, is that a brand of, I mean, is that a?
It's kind of universal, I hate to say it, I mean, we had a lot of problems with heating and air conditioning this last year. Not, not, not heating, air conditioning in this past summer.
Maybe explain what the era buses means.
Oh, era. That was that American Recovery Act where we got, evidently, we had them programmed in and we got a lot of money to federally fund those and get them replaced right away, the era buses. I think American Recovery and Resource Act, or whatever it was? So anyhow, that's some of the woes with the vehicle maintenance. Oh, what we do have proposed in this budget is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I do have concerns whether, I will be honest, most of the years, those numbers have gone over. I know there's been suggestions to try to outsource it, see if that cut, reduces our cost. We've had, not had very good luck at all, we don't, sometimes the buses are gone for longer than a month, people act like they're gonna be a priority, but they don't end up that way. So we've actually had better luck actually keeping in, getting them done quicker in-house. And we've got some newer staff that I, I think is helping that, but it's still a major cost. And this is, I've got one of those check marks you'll see here, that's where that forty-three thousand dollar increase is coming, over what was budgeted last year in this hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The other thing that I'm looking at here is adding to the transit system, a, a routing software. software. I've checked with a lot of the other, and getting kind of a feel for it. About 80 percent of most of the other transit systems already have some form of routing software as part of their operational package. What this is going to do is add $26,000 to next year's budget. That's another increase. There's $20,000 for the software, and $5,400 is included in that. That's going to be an ongoing maintenance fee. There is a company that's got a special out to the Iowa Transit Systems that's offering a reduction in this software if we get it in this next calendar year, and it's saving about $12,500. I've talked to several other people that have got this in place already, and they're very happy with it. So if we do not implement that in this budget year, I think it's going to cost closer to $40,000 to go with another company or get that implemented a year from now. One of the saving graces is... One of the reasons we want this, what we have to do, if you take a look at how we keep all our statistics, the drivers handwrite it on pieces of paper, and then they turn it in, and then the... Our lead driver has to take all that information and enter it into the computer into a massive spreadsheet. And then we take all that information and use it to gather all these statistics. This routing software will do a couple of things. One, it should collect all those statistics right there. It'll be downloaded, so we don't have to manually input them. It'll also create communication between the dispatch center and the drivers and help with some of the routing issues. It'll actually... You've got to pick up an eighth and Aetna or whatever, and it'll put that right on there, so the driver will know where it's at and help with some of the scheduling and efficiency issues. So that is something we have in, and I do highly recommend we continue with that. I don't want this to all be negative. There are some positive things. I've kind of hit on these earlier.
End on a high note, Steve.
Huh? Okay. Well, again, we did have the 6100 extra rides with that free ride for the school program, and I'd look to continue that again this year and hopefully expand it. I will say that one of the rec programs is probably one of the big benefactors of this, is they were able to take their people, their campers basically, to the school, Grime School, and get them a free lunch. But that's had minimal effect on our operating. We're out there running. We did spend a little bit more time, but had minimal effects on the operating and generated. And by generating those, remember, our funding is heavily done by rides, number of rides and revenue mileage. So that's going to help there. And again, the advertising revenue has continued to rise. That's been a really big boost. If you go back to FY13, we didn't really... We didn't have any revenue dollars there. If the program got started in FY14, we had a little over 2,000. And this past year, we ended up at almost 14, and we're projected to be around 14 for this year. So that's some good things with transit. Not everything is bad. We're getting near the end. One of the other aspects, you'll see another checkmark that we've proposed in here. Engineering is looking to get what they call a robotic total station, surveying unit. The existing equipment has outlived its useful life. We have difficulty obtaining spare parts. And this unit will allow one person to go out and do the surveying instead of two. And the costs are to be covered by the project's fees included in the engineering budget. Running to the end. I do have some future concerns as we've gone through this. The first one relates a little bit to engineering. With the project list, we've got a very heavy project list of projects coming up. That doesn't mean we can't turn those over to a consultant, or we can do it internally like we have. So I don't know that we're going to have the staff to do it. Additionally, we have two employees that are scheduled to retire in the next three to five years. I've been working with Jim, and what we'd like to do is phase some of those replacements in a little early instead of waiting for somebody to retire. And I think that makes a lot of sense. And again, we're working a lot with Jim and Stephanie to make sure if we do that, we want to make sure we have the project dollars to cover that funding. Because when we don't have the project dollars, then the general fund has to absorb those project dollars. And we've made great strides over the last couple of years, and I think we're almost there. But that's something we're looking at. There are some capital projects not funded. We had the emergency generator in for the auditorium. That's been taken out. We've got a sewer master plan that was previously in. That's been taken out. I've talked about it and didn't include anything. We don't have anything if we're ever going to look at replacing the auditorium floor. One thing that was not put in, but eventually, we need to replace the cameras that are on the existing buses. I admit that this is becoming more and more of an issue of liability, these cameras, than they have to. We've had them readjusted, but we really need to get new cameras, better cameras, because in some cases, we've had people... If people fall or certain things happen, that's kind of limits our liability as to what the drivers or anybody was doing. And again, the other thing that's on there is that removal, I'm calling it the household infiltration inflow. That goes back to that sewer diagram where we have the foundation, the sump drains, and any roof drains. Somewhere, I think that's going to need to be addressed. It isn't addressed in this budget. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. So...
Do you guys have any other... Any extra questions?
Good. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, also.
No doubt. Good job. All righty. That closes us out for tonight.
Thank you, all you folks out there in the audience.
You're lucky people.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everybody.